The time is now 7:00 PM and I will call the meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Reichel.
Here.
Pro Tem Knott.
Here.
Trustee Brittonal.
Here.
Trustee Klassen.
Here.
Trustee Flores.
Here.
Trustee Hanrahan.
Here.
Trustee Seifer.
All right, may we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting programs. Or Sheila, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, I did not hear from anyone today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Did we have anyone sign in there, Trey?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, no one signed in here in the board meetings. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, and it contains the minutes of the April 25th, 2022 Board of Trustees meeting. Would you like to discuss anything on that agenda? Or on that, yeah, the consent agenda, or make a motion?
Uh, no discussion for me, anybody?
Nothing here.
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second.
All right. A motion by Mayor Pro Tem Knott to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Trustee Hanrahan. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
Not here.
Not here?
None here.
None.
Nope.
Got none either? Okay.
Got one. The abs start at 7:30, so we need to... Are you not paying attention right now, Trey?
Different kind of conflict.
Different kind of conflict.
Schedule conflict.
Yeah. Uh, do we have any agenda changes tonight from the board or from staff?
No.
Just one, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to call the board's attention to an award one of our staffers got this last week, and I'll do that with your permission, you're an administrator at Staff Reports.
That sounds wonderful. Then we will move on to the 2022 Wildland Fire Preparation. Uh, this is an information item, and I will turn this over to Chief Sackett. How are you doing tonight, sir?
I'm doing well. Thank you for, uh, for having me. I appreciate being here. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, my name's Leaf Sackett. I'm the Fire Chief of Colorado River Fire Rescue. So, been in contact with, uh, with Jeff and asking some questions about some wildfire preparedness. And, uh, you have a memo in front of you that I sent to Jeff for, for, for your pleasure. And, uh, you know, over the last few years, um, we've very much been assessing what we're doing within our district and where we're at. And we, we started a specific wildland division, uh, back in 2018 for this, because wildland fire is our number one threat that we have throughout our district. You know, we, we cover from the 82 and a half, uh, on I-70 all the way, um, just shy of the, the 108 is where we cover. So we do have a big district, and that is our biggest threat that we have. Uh, one of, one of the things that we talk about on a, on a regular basis is predictive services as far as weather goes. And, uh, this, this sheet right here, predictive services very much is predicting a drier-than-normal May and June. And what that says, this was released on May 1st, is the potential, if a wildland fire does start, for it to be significant is high, right? Specifically for the months of May and June. And, uh, right now, we're in a, um, sorry, a La Niña weather pattern, and that's more of a drying trend, and they're predicting by the end of June into July that we'll go to a more of a neutral pattern, hopefully bringing in some monsunal rains mid-July through August. So hopefully that happens, because, uh, otherwise, we could be in for, for a long summer as far as fire goes. Uh, they are predicting across the nation that we will have one of our worst wildland years across the nation, because it's so dry. You know, one of the things that we do to prepare for this is we have what's called a Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and Garfield County is in the midst of updating that right now. And, um, we're in the final stages. I'd say we're probably about 75% through with that, and once we do release that, we'll make sure and release that to everybody. Um, so we'll, we'll get it to Jeff, and so he can share it with, um, with the council. But part of that CWPP is we identify areas of mitigation, right? And so in Silt, uh, very much Stony Ridge subdivision on each side of, uh, 16th and 7th Street is, is, um, concerned for us, right? And then you talk about the subdivision going up 16th Street to Morning Star and to Standing Deer. And that's, that's, that's big to us, because they only have one way in and one way out, up there. Uh, we also have the Spruce Meadows subdivision next to K&amp;K, 16th Street leading Standing Deer, I just talked about that, the, the whole area around the Silt Trade Center, and then Stony Ridge Pavilion. And a lot of times when people think about mitigation, what do they think about? They think about clearcutting everything, right? And that's not what mitigation is about, right? We still want people to have the, the trees in their yards and the views and everything like that, but we're talking about the ladder fuels, uh, for mitigation, right? So sometimes you have bushes or branches that are down on the ground, and those ladder fuels, when they get going, they get up into those bushes and branches, and once you get up into those crown fires and stuff like that, that's where you see, um, catastrophe as far as wildland fire goes. So when we talk about mitigation, we're talking about those ladder fuels, taking care of those ladder fuels, and making sure we're spacing right, and looking at, uh, um, looking at the angle of the slope that you live on, and just making sure that we're bucking up and trimming up some trees, you know, to where those ladder fuels can't get up into those crown fires. And that's part of that CWPP, and we look forward to getting that out. Also, in, um, what Sheila has up here, and it is in your pack, we just came out, the county chiefs in Garfield County came out with a Living with Wildland Fire, right? And it's a document that, uh, between Carbondale Fire, CRFR, DeBeck, Glenwood, Grand Valley, and Gypsum Fire, we came up together to share with our communities, because it is our number one priority that we have, and we want to make sure people, um, are prepared as much as we possibly can. And one of the ways that we can do that is right here is signing up for emergency alerts through our Garfield County 911 Center, right? So when you do that, you can sign up a landline, or you can sign up a cellphone, because a lot of people still have both, right? And if, if we can get as many people sign up for those emergency alerts, just in case something does happen, and say we want to evacuate in a certain area, dispatch can send that out, right? And, and we also have some ability to, to do some other stuff with some, uh, other evacuations, but the more people that sign up for this, the better. And that's why we want to have, uh, have that QR code in there. And if people have any questions, we, we encourage them to give us a call, because on the, um, there's also some other websites. If you go to, uh, www.crfr.us, we will post that there, and we will post this on our, uh, on our website as well. And then the last thing that I have that I want to talk about is, is some evacuation routes. And no, we don't have specific evacuation routes set up. And the reason being, I'll, I'll use Stony Ridge, um, subdivision as an example, right? If something were to happen on 16th Street, for firefighter safety and for people's safety, we want them evacuating down 7th Street, right? If it happened over on the 7th Street side, we would want them evacuating down 16th Street. So to specifically say we have certain evacuation routes for every little thing that we're going to do for wildland fire, um, it is dependent on the situation and where the fire's at and what it's doing. So with that, I am open for questions from everybody.
Well, I have a, just a really quick question. I was reading through, um, the information that you sent, and the, the homeowner guide is really good.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if a homeowner was to call you guys, you know, like, do you guys have any sort of service where you might come out, you know, and look at a homeowner's property and say, hey, like, this is what this means, you should clear this? You guys would do that?
Absolutely, we will.
I think there would be a lot of value to that for people to just kind of understand what's, what's the right thing to do.
We, yeah. And, and if, in your positions, if you talk to people and they have questions, please spread that, because we will definitely come out and assess, um, somebody's home for them.
Oh, cool.
Right? You know, you take a, a bush or something that's under a deck, a two-story deck, and they have a big bush underneath there, that is ripe for fire right there. That's the kind of thing that we would look at when we're assessing the whole home. Now, I'm not saying that the hell bush has to be taken out, but that's the kind of things that we're looking for.
And then have you guys done that with, you know, Trey as our Public Works Director, and then Jeff, you know? I would imagine in some of these areas, some of it's probably town-owned, some of it's probably controlled by some of these different HOA neighborhoods, and some of it's probably private property, like, my house comes all the way down to 16th Street, you know what I mean? So I'd imagine, you know, that's on me, so, um...
So it's, it is. We, we have started those conversations with the town of Silt, as far as trying to do a three-to-five-year plan, as far, because you can't do all of it at once, right? So we need to sit down and prioritize what we're going to do and what that looks like. And you're exactly right. If it's on Silt property, yes, we can do something about it, but to go to a, a person's private property and start mitigating, we can't. That takes the approval of that homeowner.
Sure, sure. Yep, nope, I'm with you there.
Yeah, and we just, what I want to stress is mitigation doesn't mean clearcutting everything bare ground.
Right.
It just means cleaning some sus, stuff up to slow the fire down. We want those ladder fuels gone, so it just doesn't get up into the, to the treetops and, and stuff like that.
Okay.
So is there any funding to help a homeowner pay for mitigation?
So, right now, um, we are looking, we're filling out some federal grants to go after some money to, to be able to do some of this, so we don't have to charge homeowners. Right now, we're not charging, um, homeowners if we do any mitigation, or, um, but also, we're still in the process of building that, uh, that portion of our wildland division.
Division, okay.
Yeah.
I have two questions, unless you have any more, Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead.
Where are the evacuation routes updated? You said there are some options depending on circumstances. Where would town folk go to see the correct route?
So that would be part of that emergency notification, right? If they sign up for that, uh, hopefully, we've done our job in saying, okay, we need you to evacuate down 7th Street, or we need you to evacuate, uh, 1st Street, whatever that may be. We, we should be very, very specific on that.
But that's the only place. There's not like a, I know Google Maps for some locations, they do that sort of thing, but this would be the only location for that most updated information.
The other, the other thing too, Derek, is, um, just about every time there's any sort of a wildfire, and you can correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I believe somebody creates a Facebook page with a ton of information, and they actually have interactive Google Maps that'll show where pre-evacuation area is, and actual evacuate now, it'll highlight routes. You know, granted, you gotta have a smartphone and, you know, maybe be up to date on Facebook, but that's where I've seen a ton of information on some of the different stuff that's happened, so...
And, and you are, you are correct. And that's, that's when the incident team, you're talking probably about three days into an incident, when the incident team comes in and takes over. And I'm, I'm more focusing on our initial, hey, we're getting all the resources dialed in, we're bringing in, we're trying to get it under control. And as far as what you're talking about, um, as far as Google and everything like that, I, I won't say that we're there. We're there as far as sending it out, um, we do have iPods to where we can send it out, and that's more directed at cell phones, right? We need to cover the basis on everything, not just cell phones. So we can use iPods, um, but for, for landlines and people that have both, we encourage them to sign up for the, um, uh, through dispatch. And I, and I know I didn't answer your question, what I will do is I will, I will try to find a good answer for you.
You actually changed my second question, because now the question is for Jeff. Can we publish this on the town website, including the QR code?
Yes.
And let people, uh, I'm thinking about the homeowner's guide that you gave us a, a copy of, have a link to that off the Town of Silt website, but also maybe the QR code?
Yes.
So that even if someone hasn't done it in advance, maybe in that moment, boom, they can hit it with their phone and get the latest evacuation info that they need. I feel like that's, in addition to the social, that's another way to spread the word quickly in the event of a fire.
Definitely.
As many people that we can get seeing this and in their hands, the better.
Yeah, and, and maybe also publish the information about the mitigation inspection. But let town folk know through the Town of Silt website that they can contact you guys to get that done.
Yep.
I've already written myself a note to contact you about getting it done.
Perfect.
Yeah, perfect. Word's getting out.
Good. That's what we want. And, and the, the more people that we can reach, the better.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, cool.
Um, I do know over the past couple of years, we've talked a lot about the Stony Ridge Path. Has, has any mitigation happened?
Um, some of the homeowners did some last year.
Okay.
Did some mitigation up through there, and, and talking with the wildland crew, that's one of the areas we was looking at when they get in to start on this, was that drainage and drawl that goes up through there.
Okay.
That was always, uh, yeah, that's a high priority area.
Is that the same, are you, we talking about the same one that runs up 16th Street? Are you talking about the other side?
No, so from the pavilion up through?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where the old BMX track and stuff is?
Yes.
Well, I would imagine up 16th Street, too, on the other side, right? Like, in the middle there, like, that's just full of, just...
Oh, yeah, that drawl.
The drainage there, and then like...
Drainage right there.
Yeah, so...
We talked about that also, but, um, I got a room, a lot of that is privately owned.
I was just gonna ask, don't those lots go down to the trail?
No, they, they do. I'm thinking right below those, where the, where the water runs through, you know, so you know, a 16th, like, makes that hard right sweep up?
Yeah.
That drainage area, I think, maybe down through there.
And some of that is home around.
But you are right about the rest, like, all the other perimeter, those are all private property, yeah, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't really have any other questions.
Anything else?
I don't have any questions.
I just wonder, um, what was the other one that was on here? Was the Silt Trade Center?
Oh.
I just wonder where the concern is in that...
Well, I'm, I'm thinking all, although, unless I've got my, my geography wrong, uh, down there, you know, all along the railroad tracks up and around there. I know we've had some fires there in the past.
Right.
And that, because the one fire in 2020 did get so close, because it started on the interstate, went over the railroad tracks, and got up next to some buildings right along under some power lines there, and that was, that was a little close for comfort. And so that whole area, just at least to get a good assessment on it, um, down around there, yes.
Yeah, didn't somebody burning a ditch light that thing on fire this year?
Yes. Well, I, I don't know what started it. I shouldn't say, I, I do know that we...
Sorry, yeah, that's just my assumption there.
Yeah, was a fire down.
There was a fire down there, yes.
Down there, yeah. Okay, all right. Yeah, I've got nothing else, so... Okay?
Thank you for your time, and if you, if you come up with any other questions, uh, you can get them to Jeff, and, and they can get to me, or I'd look forward to, uh, to, um, seeing, sending an email on coming out and doing some mitigation.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is the first reading of Ordinance Number 9, Series 2022, an ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, amending section 3.32.030 of the Town Code to implement a lodging tax increase approved by the voters. Um, and I will turn this over to Attorney Denkinger.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Um, tonight, uh, for a first reading before you is ordinance number 9, series of 2022, and this is a pretty straightforward text amendment ordinance to the town's code, and it would just amend the one section in the code that contains the rate of the lodging tax. Um, and as you're aware, the recent April 5th municipal election, the voters approved an increase in the lodging tax from 2.5% to 5% uh, to be effective on July 1st of this year. So this ordinance just uh, is a simple amendment to the municipal code to accomplish that. And I, let me know if you have any questions. Otherwise, the, uh, amendment language is shown on the screen there that Sheila's showing, and is in your packet as well.
Yep.
All right. No discussion for me. That's the easy one.
No discussion for me either.
Yeah, this one's pretty straightforward, just if any one from the public is listening, this does not mean that the town is funding $90,000 worth of tax increases. That's the amount that we could potentially get from the lodging tax. Um, and the first year, if we collect over $90,000, it has to be refunded. But going forward after that first year, whatever we collect, we get to keep.
Yep.
Got no further discussion from me. This is a, a public hearing, so if there's no more discussion by the board, then I will open up the public hearing. Uh, the time is now 7:20 PM, and I will open up the public hearing in regards to ordinance number 9, series 2022. Uh, persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, did we have any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Amy. And would anybody in here like to speak to this agenda item?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Uh, the time is now 7:21 PM, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 9, series 2022, as it's presented.
Second.
All right. Now, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Knott to approve the first reading of ordinance number 9, series 2022 as presented, seconded by Trustee Brittonal. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we will move on to the first reading of ordinance number 10, series 2022, an ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, amending chapter 5.25 of the Town Code to address state-issued permits for liquor licenses. And I will turn this back over to our attorney.
Hello again, Mayor and Trustees. Thank you. Um, at the April 11th meeting, I did a short presentation, um, had a memo in the packet for discussion about, uh, a new type of, uh, state-issued liquor permit, which is the, uh, takeout and delivery permit for, uh, on-premises, uh, licensees. And we talked about, uh, a potential, uh, amendment to the town's code to sort of, uh, address the existence of this additional type of permit without creating a parallel local permitting process. Um, and we, I got some feedback from you on the ways that we could do that. Um, and so I, we've drafted an ordinance to capture that, that would essentially add a new small subsection to the town's liquor code, and that's shown as Exhibit A to the ordinance in your packet. Um, and in addition, in addition to the feedback, um, I received at the last meeting, I also thought a little bit more about the other types of liquor permits that the state issues and might issue in the future. So it seems like the way that state liquor licensing is going, the state is starting to create some additional types of permits from time to time. And so this, uh, text amendment is drafted to address all state-issued liquor permits, uh, so not just the takeout and delivery permit for on-premises licensees, but other types of permits that the state might issue in the future, and then types of permits that they currently issue, like, um, like special events-type permits. Um, so this essentially, hopefully what this does is it means we don't have to update the code again every time the state comes up with a new type of liquor permit, and it will just allow the town to consider any violations of any of these permits issued by the state licensing authority in renewal hearings for local liquor licenses. And then it will also allow the town just to have an official basis in the code to receive information about potential issues with these state permits, and to, uh, report those suspected violations to the state licensing authority for, for their enforcement process. Um, so the text, as, as Sheila has shown on the screen here, is a new section 5 dot 25 dot 145, and subsections A and B. Um, please let me know any questions. This is a first reading, so happy to take some additional feedback on the way this is structured. Um, but I hope this will result in minimal amendments to the town's code going forward.
So I have, I have a question. So Attorney Denkinger, can you give us just some clarification on, uh, subsection B? So when this says the town shall have authority to receive information about potential violations, like, can you give, like, what are we talking about here? So, receive that information from who? And then what's deemed as a potential violation, right? Can we just kind of recap that again, so that we're all clear about what that verbiage really is saying here?
Sure, yeah, I think, uh, and there's no magic, um, there's no magic wording here. It's, it's just the way that I chose to word this when I was drafting. It, we could also say something like suspected violations, or complaints, or something like that. Uh, but it would just be so that there's an official basis in the code for members of the public to, uh, call the town, whether it's through the police department, or the clerk's office, or, or, or some other way, um, to report issues with liquor permits, and then have a, have a basis where the town can report those to the state.
So what happens right now if, if somebody calls the town and thinks that, you know, a minor's been drinking alcohol at a restaurant? Are you saying that the town doesn't have the authority to take that information?
I think they probably do. Sheila, do, as the, as the town clerk, do you ever receive any, um, information about, like, liquor license issues that you pass on to the state?
You know, uh, a lot of times we'll try to handle those things in-house, all with the police department, and we'll discuss, you know, if there is a deed of violation that someone may have a concern about. Most of the time, it's just someone who maybe isn't totally clear on the liquor laws, and it's more of an education process. I, I have not had anybody turn in suspected underage drinkers for, for that, uh, particular violation. Yeah, we really haven't had any issues, knock on wood, up to this point.
Well, and then maybe to, maybe to follow up on that, so the second part of that says, you know, that we may report any suspected permit violations to the state licensing authority. I mean, wouldn't we already do that? I don't know, it seems redundant. So I'm, maybe I'm just not clear why we need section B, or...
It would, if I can maybe try to answer a little bit of that.
Yeah.
I think, uh, section B to me is regarding the liquor delivery permits that we are, um, addressing now, mostly with this ordinance, that if someone were, uh, the neighbor would be concerned that the, the kids next door are getting a delivery from the liquor store, that would be a suspected or a potential violation, because they don't know maybe what the laws are.
Right.
If it were to happen right now, it would be illegal, and we could turn them into the state. Um, here in, you know, a couple of months, when this is all taken care of, and a person is still concerned, they call in and wonder what's going on, we can explain the code to them, and saying that this is, uh, a legal process that has taken place through the, the state liquor, and the, the town recognizes that, um, they are not in violation of any liquor code.
So are you saying that we couldn't do that without this language in the code? Or you can do that without this language in the code?
I think the town probably could still do it without the language in the code.
Okay.
The distinction here is that the, the state-issued permit...
Okay.
Isn't something that the town issues, so it's not something that the town has authority to revoke. Like, the town issues a local liquor license, which is for the business, for the premises, and that's, that would cover something like, you know, if a bar was serving underage customers, then that's a violation of their town-issued liquor license,
Right, right.
as well as a violation of their state-issued liquor license, because it's like a dual licensing system. But in this permit scenario, where it's a state-issued permit and the town doesn't issue it, then the town can't revoke it. And so instead of revoking it for a potential, or revoking it for an actual violation, one thing the town could do is say, you know, we're gonna formally, in our codes...
one thing the town could do is say, you know, we're gonna formally in our codes state that we're receiving information about any potential violations of these takeout and delivery permits, and we're gonna pass it on to the state enforcement authority because they're the ones who can actually revoke this type of permit.
Okay, yep, got it. Now I follow. So without, so without that, if we were to convey that information over to the state liquor board or whatever, you know, whoever made the violations, like, what are you doing? You can't tell them that. It's none of your business, right? Is that kind of where we're going with that?
Yeah, I think this is, this is like a Putin's suspenders kind of approach.
Yeah, all right.
Without this, the state may not know. No, no one may report it to the state.
Yeah, I got it.
It just, it gives us permission to report it to the state.
Cool. Just a friendly recap on that.
Because I don't think if, if a restaurant serves a minor now,
That's our liquor license.
That's a criminal issue that goes to court, so that doesn't necessarily get reported to the liquor board even. And since we're not controlling this permit, we want to be able to get any complaints they've received and give them any complaints that we've.
Got it. And I suppose, right, just sort of like a CWA sort of thing? You know, if they're just like, hey, you can't officially, I got it. Yeah, okay. Thanks for the, for your explanation on that.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you for the question, and I think, you know, it also helps to remind all of us of this kind of like dual structure that we're working with, with them.
No, it's a good point, because that was a, that was a couple, couple weeks ago that we discussed that, so.
That's a good question.
I don't have anything else on this.
Okay. Any other further discussion by the board? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing in regards to ordinance number 10, series 2022. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
All right. And would anybody in the public like to discuss this agenda item? Okay. Nobody here would like to discuss it either, so the time is now 7:32, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Nothing else for me.
I don't have anything.
Nope, nothing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 10, series 2022, as it's presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Not to approve the first reading of ordinance number 10, series 2022, seconded by Trustee Clausen. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I mean, in favor.
Got it.
Sorry.
Motion carries unanimously.
Turned out to cough.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Nine, series 2022. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silt, Colorado, approving the amended final plat of Stony Ridge PUD, recorded as reception number 628670 for lots 68A, 68B, 69A, 83A, 83B, 84A, 84B, 85A, and 85B, all in Phase Two of the Stony Ridge PUD Final Plat in the Town of Silt, Colorado. And it looks like we have the applicants here with us tonight. If you guys would like to jump up to this table, and then I will turn this over to Planner Jane. Is Planner Jane with us?
He was just there, and now he's gone.
Okay. Technology. We'll give him just a second here and see if he pops back up or not. Looks like Jeff is trying to get a hold of him.
Okay.
Sorry about this.
Is our?
Know how it works sometimes.
Is, is Derek, is Derek with us too, our town engineer?
I don't think so.
No, okay.
I think he might have just called in with his phone, so I'm going to unmute this 309 number.
All right.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, this is Mark. I got bounced from the internet here.
All right.
Glad to have you back.
Yes.
I was in the meeting, but got bounced. Anyway, are we on the agenda item yet?
We are. We are ready for your presentation.
Okay, and this is for Resolution Nine?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I won't be able to show the display I had. I had a display which was going to show the underground stormwater system. Anyway, this is an amended plat. It's the first reading for Resolution Number Nine, and it is amending nine lots within Stony Ridge Final Plat Number Two. Stony Ridge came into the town in 2003, and there are three phases. They were all platted at the same time. Phase number one was constructed pretty quickly, and then I believe it was 2017, there was an amended agreement to go forward with Phase Two and Phase Three. Phase Three developed first. Phase Two has not had any development except at the very fringes of it. And at this time, there is a new owner, and that's a developer of, a builder within Stony Ridge, and it's Uriel Mellon, and his ownership is under the name of Kalida Construction. I'm not sure if it's Inc. or LLC, excuse me, but I don't have that agenda item up here because of what happened. Okay, here we go. All right, I have this on here now. Anyway, what has happened is that the town's storm drainage standards have changed, and there is more of an infrastructure being completed here. And what is going to happen is that nine lots will be, their envelopes will change. Basically, easements are a little bit larger, and their building envelopes are slightly smaller. And in some cases, the, the shallow utilities, by shallow utilities, I mean electric, gas, and cable TV, they have to shift around a little bit. So nine different lots are having their envelopes changed. This was a, this was, let's see, since I don't have my thing up here. The planning commission considered this at their April 4th meeting, and they unanimously recommend that you adopt Resolution Number Nine. And I had some conditions up here, and they were, first, all representation by the applicant shall be deemed conditions of approval. And then number two, I had following modification to be made to the draft amended plat. Now, these were all in such things as the signature block. I wanted a plat note moved from page two to page one. They are insubstantial. They're just sort of housekeeping measures. Mr. Gamba has put together about half of those changes. My condition number three, that any recommendations made by the town attorney to the board upon further review be considered conditions of approval, and that's the same as the town engineer. And then last but not least, and no installation of infrastructure or building permits for Phase Two be issued until the amended plat is recorded with the new or amended development agreement and associated security be provided. The next step with this, after this plat is approved, there will be a new engineer's cost estimate for the infrastructure that's being put together now. And there needs to be an amended or a new development agreement for Phase Two. And I also want you aware that, at least over the last six months, when I talked with Mike Gamba, who's the applicant's representative, they were thinking of having some, some phases, sub-phases, excuse me, within Phase Number Two, and I, I understand that too. Anyway, with that, I am open to questions, and if Mike, if I did not say anything correctly, please chime in here.
I think everything sounds good, Mark. One question. I do have all of the return receipts for the certified mailing. Who should I leave those with?
You can leave. Are you there physically tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, just leave with Sheila, and then we'll get them to community development. And by the way, Mike did go and submit scans of what he had back at the time related to the, the green cards coming in, and he had previously provided the receipt for the certificate of mail-ins.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to, like to add?
No, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm Mike Gamba with Gamba and Associates. We're, we were the original engineers and surveyors on the project back in 2003, 2004. We were not up until about 2017, and then we were rehired to only focus on the storm drainage for Phases Two and Three, and so that's what we've addressed. And as Mark said, the changes to the town's design standards with respect to stormwater management between 2003 and 2017 is what necessitated these, these, this amended final plat.
Yep.
All right.
Got it.
Okay. Any discussion?
I don't have anything on this.
No, I, I suppose the only thing that I would maybe highlight here is if you, if you go to number three here, that no installation of infrastructure or building permits for Phase Two be issued, et cetera, et cetera. But, so this project has had a history in the past of some of that infrastructure being installed and then paved over without full approvals. So it would be really important to just make a note for the new developer that's doing this to not do that again. So it's not the person that's involved now.
No.
Prior owner, prior developer, so. In, in my opinion, that was incredibly irresponsible, and I would not want to see that happen again, so.
Just for clarification, I might note that when we initially made this application back in February, the owners were Ridge Runners LLC, represented by Kevin Tucker, and Mr. Tucker is here. Subsequent to that, Kevin sold the project to Uriel Meleen or Meeen of Kalida Construction. He's not here, but he is the new owner. He will be the one responsible for all the infrastructure.
Okay.
Right. And just so, it's also, it wasn't Kevin that was that.
Correct.
Right.
The applicant that, that had the project before that did the, the paving over the utilities, so. I don't want anyone to think that it was.
Good point.
Was him either, so.
Weren't they those three lots or something?
No.
No.
No. It was not, yeah.
Never mind.
Yep, not them, so. Any other discussion by the board? This is a project that's been approved several times over, so hopefully we can get some vertical construction out of it this time around, so.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
This is a public hearing, so if there's no more discussion, then I will open up the public hearing. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, which is Resolution Number Nine, series of 2022, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not have any raised hands.
All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone in the room like to discuss this as a public comment? Okay. The time is now 7:44, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Nope, none for me.
I've got nothing.
None for me.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number Nine, series 2022, with noted conditions one, two, and three in our report from Planner Jane.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Mayor Protem Not to approve Resolution Number Nine, series 2022, with the conditions one, two, and three in our forward packet, and that motion was seconded by Trustee Clausen. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in and joining us.
Yes, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance number seven, series 2022. An ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, making changes to section 17.42.055. The site plan review, section 17.78.040. The special use permit, creating and describing an open space, OS, zone district, as part of 17.12.010, and 17.12.020, and section 16.16.06, or 020. Public hearing notices in the Silt Municipal Code, Town of Silt, Colorado. I will turn this back over to Planner Jane.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and at least right now, I am still in person, so modern technology is interesting.
There he is.
And, look, can I take control from you here? Is that a yes?
Yes, go ahead.
There you go, Mark.
Okay. Yeah, you know what? Okay, that is... That is the wrong one. Okay. Can you see my screen now, ordinance seven?
Can see it.
Yes.
Okay, all right, the mayor introduced this, and this is the second reading. The planning commission recommended that you unanimously adopt these changes. I discussed them with you a few months ago, and then we had a first reading two weeks ago, and you unanimously moved to adopt ordinance number seven. We've gone through these a couple of times. I don't know if I need to repeat. I'll be happy to do that if necessary. And to me, the most important one is that now we will have an open space zone district, and it also defines what the open space zone district is. The other two items are to have public hearings in front of the planning commission for the site plan review and the special process, and those are mostly for transparency reasons. And hopefully, if people start getting advertised for site plan reviews and they find out that in most cases they're pretty smooth-running situations, maybe they'll start participating in town events, and the process will, or so, move forward in that direction too. With that, once again, I recommend that you adopt ordinance number seven with no changes. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the board in case you have any questions of the day.
No questions for me.
I got, got nothing. This is the second reading, so.
Nothing.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so the time is 7:49 PM, and I will open up the public hearing for ordinance number seven, series 2022. Persons desiring to make a comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Did we have any phone calls or emails, Sheila, in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
All right, thank you very much. And we've got nobody left here in the chambers with us, so. The time is now 7:49 PM, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion or a motion.
No discussion.
I don't have any. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number seven, series of 2022, as written.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Trustee Clausen to approve the second reading of- We have a motion by Trustee Clausen to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number Seven, Series 2022, as presented, and that motion was seconded by Trustee Hanahan. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we will move on to the gazebo structural update, and I will turn this over to Administrator Layman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You'll recall that our 2022 budget includes some money to study and, if necessary, to demolish the gazebo in Veterans Park and to design a new structure. I think that number was $10,000, which may have been optimistic, but it wasn't intended to actually build a new one, but it was actually, it was, the concept was to have some money in there to really start looking at what we might want to do after gazebo. The whole idea of replacing the gazebo kind of came about among staff and the Parks Recreation and Culture Subcommittee, when we talked about how that building was becoming unsightly, seemed like it was somewhat structurally deficient, and certainly needed a lot of maintenance. And that contributed, obviously, to the unsightly-ness, but most of all because its configuration seemed unusable for the purpose that it was actually built, and that was to put entertainers and, you know, artisans up on there to project their music or some kind of a play or, you know, whatever up there. It just didn't seem to be usable. And, you know, if musicians had used it in the past, there was, it didn't seem to be used that way now. So we went out there with Jerry Seifert and Trey, and we, you know, Jerry kind of did a little kind of structural examination, and really thought that the building was in pretty good shape. So we kind of concluded that maybe we were a little too hasty in our process, but we did find some issues, like the structural worthiness of the railings and perhaps the floor, flooring of the top deck there. And so we looked at what we might do to kind of fix the thing up, and decided to recommend to the board that we spend a little time on resolving the safety issue with the railing, give it a little bit of paint, replace some of the decking, and just make it look a little and perform a little better and safer, and see how it works for the foreseeable future. As far as the usability, which was really one of our biggest goals, because it really kind of looked like this monument of disuse, we decided we would ask our, since we're going to have the farmer's market there this summer, and we're going to have entertainers every week for that, and we have, we'll have heyday there, we thought we'd ask our entertainers to use the top deck and kind of see how they feel about that, and to do a little survey with them on if they chose to do it. I mean, we won't force anybody, but we'll just ask them to do it, and sort of record their answers, and if they decide they would rather not, we'll jot down why that was. And if they do use it, we'll interview them afterwards and try to get a sense of how usable they thought it was. And then we'll report back to the board and kind of see where we go forward. But we thought for a few planks of wood and some, and a paint job, we thought it'd be worth maybe just seeing if we can get a better sense of how the thing performs for its intent and purpose. So with that, I'd be open to any questions, or just yea or nay on that particular course of action.
I think it's good news.
Yeah.
Thanks to Jerry for going out there and checking on that, too, but you never know, right? New railing, a little new deck, some new paint, all of a sudden it's a little bit more appealing, people know it's in use, and maybe it'll get more use out of it, so.
Yeah.
Well, I agree.
Yeah.
Well, I kind of thought, too, you know, let's give it a year and see what they want in mind, you know, do they, we need to lower it four feet, or maybe they don't want to use it at all, but let's give it a try anyhow.
Totally.
Yeah, I like the idea of getting the feedback from the artist and people that are going to use it, because if nothing else, it'll give us an idea of what we would want to have in something if we replace it versus just guessing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those are my thoughts. Fix the structural issues, you know, for this year, and then still go ahead and plan on, you know, redoing it in the future. But I guess if Jeff is still listening, you know, for heyday, we've always borrowed the portable stage just because, you know, for the reasons everybody stated, you know, it's lower, it's wider, you know, so, I mean, we could ask the entertainers if they want to be up top, but I have a feeling they're all going to want to be on that portable stage.
Well, so, I think with that is it's the size, depending on how many pieces the band is, it gets pretty tight up, I'm not sure what the actual square footage is on top there or whatever. And I think that's one of the issues we run into.
But, yeah, and at one time, obviously, the downstairs was a kitchen for the heyday breakfast, but, you know, we did the breakfast outside last year, and everybody loved that so much better than being in there, so.
Can't blame them, that's kind of a dungeon.
Exactly.
Well, I want to reiterate that Jerry didn't find anything concerning about the structural integrity of the building, it was really just pieces of the building, like, you know, one or two places on the floor, and the railing, the railing, I suppose, is the biggest issue. So we will, with that, those head nods, we'll move forward with fixing it up in time for the first farmer's market and heyday after that, and we'll work with the heyday committee. We won't go around them on this, we'll certainly work with them and get the input through them or however that works, but we're not going to dictate anything at this point, or at any point.
Is there any word on the memorial that Sam, what was his last name?
Walls.
Walls, yeah, Sam Walls put together. Did the bogger dropped on that?
Was it the one that was attached to the flagpole?
Yes, yeah, with the cement and all that. The reason I ask, I had a mer for Mer's Welding asked about it, and there, he was willing to, he wanted some information, and then he would talk about running with it or getting someone else to, or...
I think the first phase got done, the flagpole got redone. I think they did.
Right.
Put a new plaque up, but he had the vision of the whole.
Yeah, he had a vision of the whole concrete and a star or something with all the divisions on it, or...
Yeah.
But no, I don't know where that, I think after he left, it kind of died.
Died, all right.
All right.
We can, we can reach out to Mr. Mer and check in with him, I guess, but I'm not, I'm not sure we have the vision of what that was supposed to do, so we'll, we'll do a little digging and see what we come up with. Sam, if you've got any specific recollections on that, maybe we could work with you on it.
Okay, that sounds good.
We'll give you a call.
All right. What's the condition of the electrical system at the gazebo? I mean, do we have enough power and outlets for a band to even be able to plug in their equipment to play?
We have a 50 amp service there because we have plugged the old food trailer in.
Okay.
There, so there is a 50 amp service, so there's quite a bit of power, not huge power, but enough for a small band.
Okay, all right. Okay. Let's redo it, see what happens to it.
You bet.
Okay, well, thank you for that update. The next agenda item is administrator and staff reports, and we will start with Administrator Layman. You're muted, sir.
So, I'm going to, hang on one second.
Maybe he's coming in here. He's coming in here for you. Hello.
I thought I'd just come in here.
That's all Disney.
I'll stand back here and not cough on everybody.
We're good.
But I just wanted to point out Trey Foner, he was named the, and you probably all know this already because you're avid readers of the town newsletter, but he was awarded the Colorado Rural Water Association 2021 Manager of the Year, and I think what makes this even more special is that he was nominated by the four employees over at the water plant.
Nice.
I can't say all four, but he was nominated by employees at the water plant. I haven't seen a, I haven't seen a poll or a vote.
He threatened all four?
They wrote a very nice application form or nomination form, which I haven't seen yet, but I've heard about it. I do intend to get my hands on it. I've asked for it, I haven't seen it yet, but I think it's just worthy that one of our own got a statewide honor for something as critical in terms of infrastructure as our water, wastewater plants. And Trey deserves a real round of applause for, I think, taking a facility that needed some help and working with the crew over there, they still like him, I think, by all reports, and really making a, making a kind of our own and making some, a real difference in not only the plant itself, but the people who work there, so hats off.
Nice job, Trey.
Appreciate you, Trey.
Thank you.
That's good stuff.
Thank you. It was. I got a good crew over there, makes it easier when you got good people working for you. I got good crews on both sides of the road, so.
Nice.
That's how you can do them both, right?
Yeah.
That's how you can do them both.
Exactly, that.
Good point.
Makes a lot of difference because I've got some good people in the right spots.
Well, I've said it before, we definitely take for granted the fact that we can turn our faucets on and have clean water, you know, and you forget there's people like you over there making that happen, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, cool.
Awesome. Yes, thank you, Trey.
I still think about that tour that I took last fall when I was first appointed, and they show you these little vials of water, and I don't remember the young lady's name, but she was like, you know, do you think this is clean? And I was like, it looks good to me, and she made some statement about like how toxic it was, how quickly it would end my life. I was like, okay, well, I'm glad you're here doing this now.
Yeah, no kidding.
It was a very important reminder of how valuable that is.
Totally. Hey, Jeff, I did want to ask you, how's the process going with our building inspections, you know, since?
Good.
Yeah.
We, we don't have an agreement in writing yet, but Bruce Stalbach, who's a building inspector who's worked in this area forever.
Yeah.
Is doing our building inspections.
Okay, so we still have inspections going on with?
Absolutely. Not to mention, did I mention? I didn't. I will now. Trey Foner and Joe Lundeen have been helping out with that, too, especially during that kind of period of time where we had a little, had a little gap.
Okay.
And so they've been going out doing all the inspections that they are capable of doing, technically competent in.
Sure.
And then, I just said his name.
Joe.
Joe.
Bruce.
Bruce. Bruce is doing the other, all the other inspections, and we've got a line on another fellow, too, so Bruce is on vacation for the next two weeks, and we've got Aaron coming in to help us with him.
Great.
So we really didn't miss a beat.
Okay, and are we still thinking the end of May for the utility billing clerk, or could it be sooner than that?
I, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, all, all under promise and over deliver.
No worries. And then last thing, have we still not heard who the national tenant's going to be in this parcel next to?
I've not heard anything.
Are we coming up on 30 days? I don't know, maybe I forgot.
Twenty-second, I think.
We always do.
Are we only at 14 days?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
One more meeting.
Yeah, it was two meetings ago, we just had that extra meeting last week.
Oh, okay.
I did check with, I checked with our Realtor, and we dotted all our i's and crossed all of our t's as far as the disclosures that we're supposed to make, so we're just kind of in a holding pattern.
Yeah.
Trying not to think about it too much.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Trey, you got anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Just scanning through here real quick.
I would say just check that last newsletter, or every newsletter. Sometimes, like this week, I didn't write a report because I was weathered in, but always try to get something out in the newsletter, so.
I like it.
All right. Yeah, looking at the memos, everyone's been busy?
Yep.
Got the car charging station back up and reporting again.
That's good.
That's good.
How long was it down?
Three or four months.
What was wrong with it?
The LTE four signal or whatever it works off of went out, and just trying to get through their process because it's all under warranty and everything like that.
Yeah, I got it.
Going through the right channels to get all that seems to take a while.
Anybody complain that it was down?
No, you could still charge your car.
Oh, really?
And it just wasn't reporting anything to us that people were charging, or they were, I think they were charging for free.
Yeah.
If it charged their cards, it didn't report to us.
Got it.
So I want to say if it wasn't reporting to us, it probably wasn't reporting that they had swiped the card.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you give us a little update on, I guess, the Seventh Street paving project that didn't go?
The Seventh Street?
Ninth Street, yeah, Ninth Street that didn't go.
Quite as planned.
I've been asked by a few people why if one part of it's bad, why are we not making the company mill the whole thing and repave it?
Okay, well, the one section that was bad was a soft spot that developed like a week later in the subgrade. Not for sure why it took a week for that to show up, but that was up by the ditch, and we had to take that completely out and excavate the dirt underneath and put a new subbase in. And the other two spots, we're not 100% sure exactly what happened there, but they, working with front tier paving, we came to agreement about getting it all fixed, and because the asphalt that was down was new enough, when we laid the new asphalt, we put that, I don't remember the technical name for it, but it's like an oil base across all of it that is, will seal all the seams and stuff, and over time, you probably won't notice that there is patches there, like you do now. They'll probably fade and start looking the same, and most of the seams, that oil should keep them covered up and not allow for issues in the future.
So what is their warranty on that? I mean, I, I'll just put it right now, if I start seeing more holes up there, I want that street milled and repaved.
Yeah, we've got a year. If something else happens within a year, that's, well, we'll start.
Okay.
Again.
Yeah.
I mean, is it worth?
I mean, I'm really disappointed in patching it anyway. We just paid for a new street. Any patch is potential for a leak, so.
Yeah, like I said, there was a couple that I'm not for sure what happened, but the one, a soft spot developed a week after we paved it, and, I mean, we had trucks full of asphalt and everything else running over it, and we never really saw... we never really saw the soft spot and then all of a sudden the asphalt started coming apart and we watched a truck go over it and you could see it do that and we're like, where the hell did that come from?
Yeah, and I, I mean, this isn't, I'm not, the town didn't do anything wrong in this process. We hired a subcontractor to do that. You know, I really would like to look at that and see if, even though they've patched it and it has a year warranty, I think it needs to be milled and repaved. We paid, we paid for a new properly done street, not a
Patched up?
Not a patched up street.
It's a pretty good point.
Yeah, I mean, nothing against the staff or the town, but I, I agree with, with the mayor. You know?
Well, Trey and I actually talked about that this morning.
All right.
So we're kind of on the same page.
Was that, who was the overall contractor that did that job for us?
Frontier Paving.
Oh, Frontier did that one, okay. Oh, you mentioned that.
Yeah, they've done, they've done about all the paving in town.
Yeah, I mean, they've done millions and millions of miles of paving in the valley, but, I mean, something went wrong, whether it was prep, whether it was early on, you know, the asphalt plants just fired up. Did they have some crap still stuck in there from last year that, that got in there? I mean, there's a million things that could have went wrong, but I mean, something goes wrong, it's up to that company to take care of it, not.
That's why we hire a subcontractor to do it, so that way they can do it right and if they don't, we hold them accountable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. What'd you guys talk about this morning?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Okay.
All right.
Yep. Yep, we talked about the, the issue and how satisfied we were with it. We left the conversation rather open, so.
Okay.
All right. Well, I guess if we could have an update at the next meeting on what direction we're going to go with that, I would appreciate it, so.
And speaking of projects, I know it's early in the season, but have, have you noticed a difference with the Seventh Street irrigation? Or is it still too early to tell?
Not yet. We'll notice that when we get into July and August on the really hot days.
Got you. Okay.
Um, I did notice tonight when I was on my, actually, when I downed to this meeting right up here at the new culvert we put in, there was a gentleman with a shovel digging next to that culvert.
It looked like he was digging his own little irrigation ditch.
It looked like, yeah, he was trenching.
It's the homeowner who lives there. I saw it too.
I don't know where that's at. I'll have to go look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't want to.
North, northwest side of the culvert.
Yep.
Yeah.
So as you're going up the street, left-hand side on the top side of the culvert, yeah. There was a guy digging there, which I thought.
Across the road?
No, right next to the ditch.
Mm-hmm. Like right on the corner of the culvert. Like, literally like trenching like a ditch. This is what it looked like.
Yeah.
Who knows? I don't know. I didn't stop, but.
Yeah. It seemed a little weird to be digging right there.
It did.
Hire them.
Hire them.
Already digging.
Yeah, we need guys like that.
Yeah.
We need a couple of seasonals, right?
But the baseball field looks wonderful this year. The soccer parks are looking amazing. You know, great job on everybody out there. There's a ton of work to be done and there's a ton of work getting done, so.
Thank you.
So I guess we kind of wrapped up administrator staff reports and board comments into all of one, but we'll start then with trustee Hanrahan and see if he's got.
Just congratulations to Trey again. Thanks to Jerry also for, for walking the gazebo and getting that done. That's much appreciated. That'll save us some time and money. That's it.
All right.
Yeah, congratulations, Trey. Good job. It's about it for me, too.
Okay, trustee Britton?
Yeah, again, congratulations, Trey. Well deserved. Phenomenal job in everything you do. Uh, then just with the watering, everybody make sure that you're following your water schedules when you're supposed to and whatnot. Makes it easy for everybody if everybody just follows along, does what you're supposed to do when you're supposed to do it. And then I just look forward to the event season, everything coming up. Get some use out of that gazebo and see where we need to go with it.
That's right.
Trustee Clausen?
I just want to congratulate Trey again and, you know, staff, keep up the good work.
Jerry here?
I'm here.
I'll go, but I just want to make sure he's here, but.
Do you have any update for us, Jerry, on board comments?
Uh, no, just want to thank Trey and Joe for helping with the inspections and that's about all I got to add.
All right. Mayor?
I remember that one time that I ran the meeting and I didn't realize that trustee Flores was on Zoom.
Twice.
I'm really sorry about that. So I don't want that to happen.
That's dumb.
Congratulations, Trey.
Thank you for keeping score.
You do a good job and thanks to trustee Seifert for going out to look at the gazebo with the town staff. I thought that was really good news and for the record, I would like it to be known that I have a heavy opinion that our meetings need to be back in person. No more Zoom. Presenters can come in person, applicants can come in person, staff can be here. And I think that we saw that tonight when we're sitting here in awkward silence waiting for one of our presenters to get hooked back up to the internet. So it's time that we can come back to in person, so. That's all I got.
All right. Does anyone know when our first event is? Isn't it the movie in the park?
June third, Movie in the Park.
Okay.
Nice.
Thank you. I don't have that in front of me.
That's also going to be an open house for the pedestrian bike overpass.
Okay. Let's see if we can fill that park with people for the movie, so. Tell your neighbors, tell your friends.
Yeah.
Let's get everyone down there and have a good time, so. I got nothing else. So the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
I got a motion by trustee Britton all to adjourn the meeting seconded by mayor Protim, not. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Halls opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight.
All right, let's go Avs, man.